Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting, August 22nd, 2022. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on September 6th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. They're in the back. If you are an applicant, we do not require you to submit a speaking request form. Roll call. Everybody's here, Jerry. Approval of the minutes from the August 8th, 2022 meeting. Any errors or noted changes you'd like to recommend? Hearing none, consider a motion?
So moved.
I still move.
Been moved and seconded to approve the August 2nd, 2022 minutes of the Planning Commission discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Have you all gone through your agenda packets, either on the Internet or in the paper form? Any clerical errors, things you want to recommend at this point in time? Hearing none, the chair would consider a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations from the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Amendment Review, CU 8525, for Pamela Ruster to review an existing caretaker's residence in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 8525, with conditions. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1524, for Rushmore Candy Company, LLC, to review a bell tower sign to be 50 feet tall, with the total height of the letters to be 35 feet tall in a highway service district. And staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 1524, as it is no longer needed. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1807, for Three Forks Development Company, LLC, to review four illuminated on-premise signs within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a highway service district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1807, with conditions. Item number six, this Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1848, for Robert and Yolanda Pace, to review a pole barn as a primary structure in an agriculture district. Staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CU 1848, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-05, for David Spear, to review a garage as a primary structure in a rural residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-05, with conditions. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-10, for Hadley Eisenbees and Kristen Bros, to review a shed as a primary structure in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-10, with conditions. Item number nine is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-11, for Travis Christman and Theodore Christman, as the owner, to review a 12-by-60 single wide mobile home in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-11, with conditions. Item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-17, for William and Christine Barber, to review a shop building as a primary structure in a rancher residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-17, with conditions. Item number 11 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-19, for Boyd and Sabrina Knutson, to review living in a recreational vehicle temporarily while building a cabin in a rural residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-19, with conditions. Item number 12 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-20, for Boyd and Sabrina Knutson, to review a bathhouse as a primary structure in a rural residential district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-20, with conditions. And finally, item 13 is Minor Platte, MPL 22-40, for Deborah Pimental, to subdivide and create lots 13C and 13D of Battle Creek Mountain Estate subdivision. And staff recommends approval of Minor Platte, MPL 21-2-40, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany.
You're welcome.
Any polls from the staff?
No.
From the commission?
Yes. Number eight?
Okay.
Number 13.
Number 13. I'd like to have number five polled. Anybody from the audience would like to have any polls? Okay, let's go. Now, I do allow, since we've got a different chair, if you have a specific question in regards to an item that's on the consent, I allow that question to be asked of the planner. And should you see that you've gotten a satisfactory answer, I have no problems with you making a motion then to go ahead and approve it per or deny it per what your thoughts are, so that we get a motion on the table and get it read then. Does everybody understand what I was meaning, rather than review the entire thing for one question? Or clerical? Jason, are you number five?
I am. Jason Thompson, Assistant Director.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
We need a motion to approve the consent.
Oh, yeah, we haven't. I agree. I agree, I got caught up with Jason coming up. Apologize. Let's have a motion now to approve the consent calendar as altered with number five, number eight, and number 13 polled. Thank you.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda consent calendar with number five, number eight, and number 13 polled. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Number five, my question is just, and we were discussing, because Mike and I are both from that area, in regards to the ownership up there and the signs, does the development company itself, the Three Forks, or is the saw fellow Three Forks Development, is that what he calls himself? There was some question as to who owns the signs.
It's the property owner that owns the signs. They did have an applicant, Tim McTavish, that applied for the sign permits. I believe he was the installer for the signs.
Oh, all right. That's why his name is on, that's what threw us a bit of a curve.
Right.
So then the Three Forks Development is what's left or unsold of those lots, is that correct?
Well, there's the property owner of that lot.
Oh, of that lot?
Right.
Understood. That's the only question I've got?
Okay.
I'm moving to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mike?
So you're saying that Tim is Three Forks?
That one I...
I'm not saying that, no. Tim applied for the sign permits and the Conditional Use Permit. The property owner is Three Forks Development.
Oh. Okay. All right.
He has his name on the sign permits, as I understand it from Jason.
Correct.
But it's listed, the ownership of that property is the Three Forks Development. Is that satisfactory to you, Mike?
Yep, all right, all right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to number eight. Do you have a specific question, Karen?
Yes, I would like to see condition number eight, that this Conditional Use Permit be reviewed in one year, or on a complaint basis, or as directed. I would like to see it reviewed in a year, because this shed doesn't really look like a shed to me. I would like to know in a year that it's not being used as a cabin, or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, could second my mental planner, that's what will happen. So that, on a complaint basis only part, just is for, if there's a complaint about it, or multiple complaints between now and that one-year review from now, it can be brought back before.
Okay, that was my only concern, is I'd like to have it looked at sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah, equalization, put it as a guest cottage. But when you look at the inside, it's just a shed right now, so.
I would move approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 21-10, with conditions.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Conditional Use Permit, 21-10, per staff's recommendation with conditions. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13. Do you have a specific question on that, Kevin?
So Cody, in the size of the lots, on the staff report, it's listing lots as 3.05 acres, yet on the plat, it's listing both lots at 3.13 acres. So there's just a discrepancy in the size of the lots, according to a plot. And I see that it's, it needs a survey as part of the conditions. Just asking for a little clarification.
Yeah, so I'm guessing what happened is, some of that stuff was, or some of the information on the page was pulled from the layout plan, which was applied for by the applicant. So at the time, the applicant's put down that the lots were going to be approximately 3.05, but they actually have a survey, or she's in the audience if there are any questions. The 3.13 and the 3 point, I think they're both 3.13, that would be the correct information, because that's actually been surveyed. So that information just wasn't updated. The applicants were the ones who put approximately three acres for both.
Okay. I will move to approve MPL 22-40 with the correction that those lot sizes are 3.13 acres.
Is that your motion then?
Yes, sir.
Second, I clearly seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve MPL 22-40, per staff's recommendation with conditions. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 13.
All right, this item is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 21-73, to review a marijuana cultivation facility on the subject property. The reason for the review is that we had met with the applicants, their contractor, and some other individuals, and they would just wanted clarification as far as the road to the entrance to the property. As it was originally approved, it was approved with 25 conditions, and the number 13 stated that any access road built within or along the section line right away must be built to meet its 14 standards, so that would be on that east side. But it also stated that the access road must be constructed as a 32-foot wide road with a paved surface, asphalt or concrete can be approved by the county highway superintendent prior to operation. What the applicants are requesting, that they only build it to the portion that you can see here, and not all the way to the facility and down. So essentially, they would just go to the edge of their property, because they own this 40-acre piece right here. So they're just asking for approval from the Planning Commission that they are okay with them coming just to the edge of their property, and then using this essentially as a driveway, instead of coming all the way down this portion of the easement to access their facility. So the applicant's agent is in the audience, if you have any questions. He is the contractor that is working with the applicant.
I'd like to hear from him.
Okay.
Good morning, my name's David Gustafson, I'm with Heavy Constructors Incorporated. And I thought my clients would be here this morning, but they haven't arrived yet. But I think there was some confusion when all this was approved in the Conditional Use Permit, and I guess the request for this actually is just due to pretty much a hardship of the cost. We've evaluated this road, and to bring this road all the way to their facility is about a $500,000 change to their process. So that's what was discussed in the meeting with Brittany, could we take it to the other side of the first individual's property, drop down on our own property, and build that road in there? Eventually, probably would build the other road once they're up and running, and have created some funds. I'm just the builder, so, but I did run numbers for them, and it is quite a bit. And Brittany, I know there was a little confusion in what was submitted and what wasn't, I think, originally, or am I mistaken, as far as the map that got shown? And I think it was maybe a confusion.
I think there was some confusion among where that road came in, and typically, when we require it, we require it to the facility, so it would have been all through that, you know, along here, to the section line. Because these are all, so these were eloquently described properties, so they didn't have to be planted through the city. So when they did that, they didn't have to meet any of the city's subdivision requirements for road improvements. So all of these, along all of these lines, these interior are 33 feet on either side access easements. So there's a section line to the north and a section line to the south. All of these properties are zoned heavy industrial, these few properties here is zoned commercial. So that 32-foot wide road is consistent with what those types of roads, access roads are needed for those types of zoning districts.
While we've got Brittany and Dave up here, any questions from Commissioners? I have a couple. Brittany? It's not uncommon, just so a request isn't uncommon, is it? We've got quite a history of looking at where they develop the road up to the location, either for, and I'm not saying necessarily for industrial, but for all of our zoning classes.
Correct. We do see that pretty commonly, even in a section line, that they'll go to the edge of the property and then drop in, like as a driveway. That's pretty common, instead of improving all the way across the property.
Okay, my next one would be, there's one of the conditions that the access road constructed is 32-foot wide with a paved asphalt and concrete service. Dave, do you have any problems with that? You know, did you give them numbers for that, I guess, to the owners?
For the new road, or for what it would be to build the road?
Well, I'm asking for asphalt or concrete service.
I did, I priced, I used J&amp;J asphalt, and at 32 feet plus, then they require 12 inches of gravel.
Correct.
And then 5 inches paved service, or 6, I don't remember. But yeah, when we priced it, it was about $480,000.
Is that a curb-type situation, Brittany? Is there a curb on it? No.
No, it just meets the county. And they, you know, this is not a dispensary sales facility, so they don't have very many cars going to it. They'll probably have eight to 10 people there that are working there. And then, of course, some of the people that will buy that product to go to the dispensaries, but the cars are very limited, as far as what'll be going down there to get started, so.
All right, my last question is, it says, is 15, that if required by the South Dakota Department of Transportation, improvements be made to the approach of 79 prior to the operation? Has that, is that something that's firmed up a little more than if, since this is going this way?
I'm not sure if they have decided, when they work to get the approach permit for their facility or for their building permit. So the next step with the marijuana facility is the CUP is essentially the first step. The next step is their development plan review, so a lot of that will come with the development plan. They're also looking at naming this road, because that will be a request with the development plan also. Because if you look at this area, let me see if I have a bigger map. So this is a section line road that comes in here, this will be Lamb Road. There's another section line road here that comes into this heavy industrial. This is kind of the center of access into that town, that whole area here. So we're going to ask that this be named too. So a lot of those items will come up during that development plan review, which is the next step in the process for their licensing for the facility.
The reason I ask it is because of the actual development costs, I guess. In other words, is that something that, that approach, are we going to hold that one property owner responsible to develop that approach? On top of asking him to, we've already got him coming across with the road, we're going to have to modify. I'm just asking whether that's something that's in the offing.
Right, and that would be up to the DOT, essentially.
Oh, not the DOT, all right.
Megan Krieger with the State's Attorney's Office. And just a reminder, this is just a review, so you can't change any of the conditions. So it would essentially just be a motion saying, if you agree, that they can do what they have proposed here, it would just be a motion saying, we agree that that meets condition, whatever, I can't remember what condition it is. But this would not be the place to change it, because it has not been notified to the public.
Megan, I'm not looking to change it, I'm looking at how much his customers got to spend to get this all done. That isn't, at some point, it's not right to ask one property owner to develop for six more pieces of property.
I get that, but this is not up for an amendment, so we can't change it right now.
Well, I know, I don't want to change it, thank you.
Yeah, and staff had met with the applicants and Mr. Gunderson, and the highway department, and they were okay with this. The highway department was okay with this.
With the possible approach costs?
No, with just developing, yes, just developing to here, and then dropping down and not requiring them to develop the road all the way across.
Understood.
Chairman, where's Hanny's development? If you show the big picture of all this?
It is up here.
That big?
So it would be all up in here, and then this is Lamb Road. So this actually is rezoned, that was the one that we just rezoned to heavy industrial, was right here.
So it's about 80 acres up?
Well, this is 40, yep. So this would be 160 acres right here. And then this is Lamb Road, and then this is that portion, that 160, that's in the county, and then the rest of that industrial park is up here.
Yeah. And Charlie, to answer your question, if you're going to go that far in, instead of take the commercial, most of the time, you have to do the approach and the road to your property. And then the next person will have to do theirs. So unfortunately, if you're going to go further in, sometimes you have to do those approaches. Plus, from what I've seen from Colorado, and going to the cultivation, and with Brittany and Jason, they make some good money off, if they know how to do their job with cultivating, they make some good money off cultivation and marijuana.
Understood. But what I was getting at is that approach, there isn't another 1,000 feet, and you're dealing with the state. And the state likes to keep their approaches 1,000 feet apart, so pretty soon, what you end up doing is the first person to develop is going to end up covering the cost of not, and it looks to me like the developer, whoever owns the land, ought to cover the cost, not the person. But we're not, I'm not asking to change that, I'm asking that we consider that if that could drop in his lap too, that becomes a concern of the person trying to, well, when I say occupy that piece of property.
Yeah, but when you want to develop, that's part of what happens to you, unfortunately. Been there, done that, so whoever goes first usually gets hit with those costs. We have, if you remember from Wiseheart, he's got 16 to 18 feet, and now we want to do 24 inches of gravel on his, so kind of some crazy stuff going on with some of this. But if you're wanting an approach to your property, and you want to do a business, sometimes part of that is, you get to suck up some of those costs.
Okay, I'm just trying to point out that when you start developing an intersection on a US highway, and you're one property owner, I have some concerns for that person that's trying to invest that, whether it's marijuana or anything else. If that was a car dealership, I'd have the same concern, that we're asking the first fellow in to come across a US highway and make an intersection. And when you're dealing with the state, you're dealing with 1,000 feet minimum, I believe to the next, is that not correct, Dave? You deal with it all the time.
I'm not sure about that, but...
Out there, okay.
The driveway is there, I'm ready, it probably just needs those improvements to meet. There already is an access there.
I was thinking for both directions, is what I was getting at. I drove by it, and it's not set up much for traffic for both directions.
And most of the time, if you do any kind of, like if Pat develops that area into subdividing, a lot of times, he should be putting the approach and the road in, in the first place. But if they're willing to go out there, and they need that access, and they want it, and he doesn't want to do it, then they have to, the people that want to do the business end up having to do it, so unfortunately.
I agree with you on that one, Devin. In other words, the developer should be part of this development. Thank you. I have no other questions for Dave or for Brittany.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Where do we stand at this point? What are we going to okay at this point? I'm looking at number 11 about the approach permit. What do these, this customer, shall we say, what do they have to do?
So the request is to approve it with the 25 conditions, with the understanding that for number 14, that that is the portion that's going to be constructed. So that the Planning Commission is of the understanding, when we come back with the development plan, and they go in front of the Board of Commissioners for the licensing, that they've met the requirements that the Planning Commission has imposed on them. And that the road is constructed in the manner that the Planning Commission is of the understanding the portion that's going to be constructed. That's what staff is hoping to get from this review, so that they can't come back later and, or someone can't come back later and say that they should have constructed all the way down to the road, that they've done what was asked of them from the Planning Commission.
As well as the approach?
Right, and it would be up to DOT, and it would depend. Sometimes DOT does it based on the use. So if they don't believe that that facility is going to create enough traffic to improve that, it could be the next person to get their building permit will have to improve that approach. So it depends, I've seen them go both ways.
They give them the criteria, they want the approach developed to after, then?
Right. So it would be up to DOT, like I said, I've seen it go both ways, where this facility may not generate enough traffic for a full improvement, but the next building permit may. So that's, it's going to be up to DOT.
But this, our recommendation would include that approach at this point in time, because of the conditions?
Right, correct. Yes, it would still include it, so whatever DOT requires of that approach permit, it's covered in our conditions. But the biggest thing is that the understanding with the Planning Commission, that this is the portion of the road that will be constructed, or that is required for access to the facility. And they're not having to construct it all the way to the facility. It's just this portion here, instead of going all the way across and down.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jim.
How would you like it worded?
Would it be good practice if the people to the north, when they develop that property, would also resort to the same kind of approach? In other words, putting a driveway in, rather than ever extending that road beyond where it's suggested?
They could, it would depend, because this is a conditional use. It is conditioned on the road being constructed. So they could go along from this to the north and construct a driveway, yes.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if that's good practice, if we should be doing that consistently then, because once one person does it, then the assumption is that everyone should have access to that option. I'm not saying it's necessarily bad, but it's certainly not as good an infrastructure as what's being proposed.
Any other questions? Karen, you had a question, how do you want it worded?
Yeah, how would you like it worded? Just that you recommend approval with the 25 conditions, with the understanding that the portion of the road for item number 14 is to the proposed site plan that was submitted, so we will put that in with the conditions. That's my motion. It will be part of the record.
Could this picture be included with that?
Yes, it will be part of the record.
Okay.
All right, awesome.
Go ahead, Devin.
So if someone develops further east on the property, like the next section, who's going to build that road?
Hello.
[laughing]. [inaudible]. [inaudible].
We need a second to Karen's motion.
Was yours a motion, or was it just?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
So, so seriously?
I have to stop you just for a moment, Deb. Is there a second to Karen's motion for discussion?
Not seconded.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Deb.
Seriously, so who, who's gonna build the road?
It should be the developer.
Okay, so that's why I'm saying, so, um, if someone wants to build further east on this road, we're gonna make the guy that's building further east finish this road to thirty-two feet, so he can do his business. Cause we didn't have these guys finish it. Is that correct? In order to have the, a business on the eastern part of the next section. We're gonna make it gravel because-
If they wanna construct to this side, yes, they would have to improve it to get to that portion.
Other side, instead of the person that we didn't make do the thirty-two feet up to their business. Just saying. Cause we're gonna start veering off to driveways up to people's sections. I mean, I feel for the business because they legally can do that if we want them to, but I'm just saying, the next person's gonna suck up that next thirty-two feet of five hundred thousand to get to their business. And maybe they just have three people at their business, so, just food for thought.
If I could say something real quick, Megan Krieger with the State's Attorney's Office. So I don't know who owns that eastern property, I don't know if it's Pat Hall or if it's somebody else, um, but those access easements, it's not necessarily clear whether they're public or private access easements, so there's a possibility that people that are trying to come across from seventy-nine may not even be able to use that easement, because it may not be a public easement that anybody could use.
I think I saw them as public access easements, am I correct?
Well, I looked at the, I looked at the eloquent description, uh, and it is a horribly written document, and it doesn't say one way or the other.
I thought it said-
Megan, is that also because it's not a section line?
Yeah, so those aren't section lines, those are just easements, but it doesn't say whether it's a public easement or a private easement, so all of those, you know, they're cross-sections, um, it's really unclear whether those are public or private. Um, there's a case law that says that, um, if it's not defined specifically as a public access easement, then the assumption is that it's private, so it's likely, but I, I can't make any promises, but it's likely, based on the facts that I know, that that would be declared a private access easement by a court. Um, so, it would really only be able to be used by the people that are within that development and the developers, um, whoever they send it to.
Why, so why would you do a thirty-two foot off of the highway on a private access easement when we should probably just have them do a twenty-four onto a twenty-four if it's a private?
Cause it's heavy industrial, and we can't change the conditions right now, cause they would have to amend their CUP to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask, Brittany, can you pull that back to see where the section lines, what they look like? So the commission could see that?
Other section lines here and here.
Okay.
I read them.
And this portion is also heavy industrial that's to the east.
I can't find it.
Any other discussion?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Stupid question probably, but north of there is Rapid City, correct?
Uh-huh, Rapid City city limits is right here.
In their part of this industrial park per se.
Yeah, that, that industrial park starts about here and is right here.
How are they treating their roads up there?
Um, my understanding that they're doing improvements to the road, they did get a TIF to do a lot of the infrastructure improvements for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Kevin.
I will be abstaining from vote on this matter.
Thank you.
Potential conflict of interest?
Additional discussion?
Uh, is there a building there now?
No.
I mean, there must be some compelling reason that it's located that far east. I mean, that's one of the problems, is the structure is gonna be located evidently at some distance from, uh, the property line on the, on the west side, uh, which requires a longer approach, you know?
And I don't know the reasoning for their placement of the facility.
Heavy industrial, so, and there's nothing in that first law, the, the commercial.
There's like an old contractor storage, and then there was a racetrack there. Uh, there's a conditional use permit for the racetrack.
I assume there, yeah, there was some reason for them to locate it where they did.
Brittany, some of it would involve their, what would I say, selection of how they want, um, under the marijuana regulations too as well, wouldn't it? Their, their placements, because there's some, uh, restrictions in there that explain how far you can be to this and whatnot, and they've done their reporting based on that. In other words, the location of the building being back there involves their, um, under the marijuana ordinance?
I think it's just preference, and I'm not sure if they wanted to develop the other portion for other uses.
Could you come forward, please? Just a second. And please introduce yourself just for the record.
I'm Tim McMahon.
Yes.
CEO of M&amp;M.
Yep.
Um, the reason we got the property where we, where we got the property now is because of what you said about the marijuana restrictions, um, allowing people to write in if they need, you know, to, um, object to where we're putting the property. That's one reason. Second reason we moved it down there, because it's flat down there. The other area was on the hill kinda, so that's why we moved it down where we moved it.
Questions for Mr. McMahon while we've got him. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Hearing none, I'm gonna put it to a vote. If you have any additional questions or concerns, it's time to put it on the record. Okay, the motion is, and can you help me on this one, Jerry? Because the weirding-
Nope.
We're, one, we're leaving all the conditions intact, and we're adding this as well as a, uh, this schematic or picture to the request. You wanna state it so it's clear for, uh, the vote, Brittany?
To approve it with the twenty-five conditions, with the understanding for condition fourteen, that the road is constructed in accordance with the site plan that was submitted, uh, and then we'll add the site plan for the record.
And that would be conditional use permit twenty-one dash seventy-three?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
An abstention.
One abstention, yes, thank you. Guys are beating me up today, I'm not doing a very good job. Thank you. On to number fourteen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we discuss, um, the road naming options fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen as one item, but vote on each individually.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Been moved in second to, uh, discuss items, flip back and make sure that we get the numbers right on this, correct? Items number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, uh, together, uh, with an individual vote, and it's based upon, uh, similar or, um, uh, similar, um, conditions for all the, the same, thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Go ahead, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack from Mental Planner, so item fourteen is a proposed road name for Dancing Wolf Road. The, it's to name a private sixty-six foot wide access easement, uh, again, Dancing Wolf Road. The applicant is Brian Hammerback of H&amp;H Land Company, and the new road will provide access to seventeen lots, and you'll see on the screen, the Dancing Wolf, with, with Wolves, uh, is this red colored road that extends down here. Uh, basically what happened is the applicant, uh, they eloquently described, I think, close to forty, forty lots out there, uh, they ran out of address points off of Antelope Creek Road, so they're gonna have to name all these roads that they take access off of. And then item fifteen- Uh, so item fifteen is to name a sixty-six foot wide private access easement, Cisco Lane, or Two Sox, Two Sox Lane? Sorry, I'm so confused on where we're at here. Yeah, Cisco Lane, and that's gonna be, uh, this blue colored line right here, again, it's a sixty-six foot wide access easement. Number seventeen is to name a sixty-six foot wide private access easement, Two Sox, um, Road, which is this purplish pink line here. And then item eighteen is Costner Court, which is gonna be this purple right here, and then item nineteen, uh, is to name, uh, this white colored line, Standing Fist Road. And staff recommends approval on all of them.
Okay, questions for Cody?
You pick names.
I think he's a fan of Dancing with Wolves. They all, they all come from the movie.
What was it, you have two socks on and you know Louis?
It's, in all fairness, it's, it's not a drop-in bucket, they, they go through a lot of gymnastics to select, uh, these names and get them cleared so that they, um, through the parties, and, and this is a nicely prepared, this is an excellent presentation. Uh, so, uh, I understand in the past, that naming a road is, it sounds like just a slam dunk, but it's not. And, and a lot of people get concerned about the time it takes to review all the, the naming, so.
Yeah, they, all the roads were approved by nine-one-one, and, uh, like Mr. Johnson said, they have to go through nine-one-one, cause if it sounds similar to a road in either Meade County, Lawrence County, or some of the surrounding counties, uh, nine-one-one won't approve it, cause they don't want, uh, a dispatcher to get confused by which road they're actually going to.
Question?
Go ahead.
Uh, any of these names copyrighted by the film's developer?
That I am not sure of.
I mean, it just pops in my head that, uh, we usually don't name roads after the names of companies or, you know, intellectual property, and I have no idea, it doesn't seem there would be, but it also seems very possible with, uh, you know, those kind of intellectual property issues, that someone may have had a blanket, you know, motion to cover all of these kinds of things, I don't know, but, uh, it's, I, I have no other further guidance, I just thought of that.
Yeah, and gen- generally, nine-one-one doesn't like naming roads after people's names, because if you don't like that person, the sign generally gets shot at, especially out, out east of town, um, but I know Costner, Costner Lane's not spelled actually like Costner, so it's a little different.
And it's spelled differently.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Questions for Cody? Chair would address the motion for, uh, item, uh, let's see, I've gotta do this by the front page, we don't list it on the memo, um, just a second, I'll get back in our agenda. Be item number fifteen. That's the Dancing with Wolf Road? Yep.
I move approve, or I move that we approve item number fifteen, the Dancing Wolf Road name, as presented by staff.
Moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item number sixteen is also a road naming, same company, and the road naming, uh, would be Cisco Lane. Is there a motion?
A move to approve item sixteen, naming the road Cisco Lane.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to, um, name, and it is agenda item number sixteen, to Cisco Lane. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item number seventeen is a road naming, same land company, is there a motion? It's for Two Sox Place.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to, uh, move in second to approve Two Sox Place under road naming, item number seventeen on the agenda, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item number eighteen is a road naming under the same land company, H&amp;H Land Company, for Costner Court. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
Moved in second to, uh, handle item number eighteen as road naming, H&amp;H Land Company, for Costner Court. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Last one is a road naming, H&amp;H Land Company, uh, Standing Fist Road.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second. Moved in second to, uh, handle item number nineteen, road naming, H&amp;H Land Company, to Standing Fist Road. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. On to number twenty, item twenty.
Item number twenty is the county board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from their August eighth meeting.
Any discussion or questions for Brittany on the board report? Thank you, Brittany, on to item number twenty-one, anybody remaining from the public wants to chew on us? No? All right, items from the staff today.
I just have one item today, we have a new planner, and I just wanna introduce to all the planning commissioners, Megan, um, she comes to us, um, from, from Oregon, um, so-
It's a Megan?
A Megan, another Megan.
Ah.
Um, so she did come from a, a place in Oregon where she did some engineering and some planings, so she has some planning background, so.
Good, yes.
Yeah, welcome.
What part of Oregon?
Um, the Salem area, so south of Portland.
I moved here a year ago from Corales.
Oh, yeah? I liked Corvallis.
I worked for Marion County for almost five years.
Really? Sure.
You, you may have to abstain more often. Just threw that in, sorry, I didn't mean to pick up. Probably the only thing I did right today, thank you. Okay, items from the membership. No. Deb says no, nobody's got one. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn the planning commission. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you.